I would like to call to order the April 21st, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. I think I said that twice. I need to inform you that this meeting is being held remotely by telephone as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all telephone communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. And I am informing you that we are, in fact, recording. Good evening, everyone. Before I begin, I just have to say, I feel like the weather is just not cooperating with us at the moment. Forty degrees and raining during all the other stress we've got going on. It's just not fair. So I'll start us off on that happy weather-related note. For those folks on the call attending the meeting, I just want to let you know, I'll sort of run through what the agenda is. And our process is that the Board of Selectmen have sort of the first crack at making comments or questions when a particular topic's been discussed by the meeting. And then I will ask for public comment. So that's sort of the way the order will proceed. And then when we conclude a very brief agenda tonight, I'll also ask if there's public comment for any items that do not appear on the agenda. So, you know, we'll start out discussing, you know, Mary, Joe and I, certain of the things on the agenda, but you will get a chance to speak if, in fact, you'd like to. So the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of our prior meeting. I think it was April 14th, but I know I've got a couple of quick changes to those minutes, so I'm not ready to vote. So if my colleagues would indulge me, I'd like to hold off till next week on the approval of those minutes.
I agree.
Sure.
Great. So I'd like to turn to our Town Administrator, Tom Mayo, and Assistant Town Administrator, Michelle Montegier, for our COVID update for this week. Tom?
Great. Thank you. Just want to confirm you can hear me?
Yes.
Great. So the COVID update for the day. Governor Baker announced today that, or for the week, Governor Baker announced today that all public and private schools and the Commonwealth will remain closed for the remainder of the school year to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. That was announced this afternoon. We are anticipating further guidance from the Governor with respect to essential services in the state and will reevaluate town operations at that time. As of today, the DPH is reporting 3,043 COVID-19 cases in Plymouth County. Something that's new this week from last week is that the DPH's new guidance is that the towns can report town-based numbers from their, as provided by them. So we are going to do so tonight. So the DPH has announced that there are 49 confirmed cases in Hingham, and that is as of last Wednesday. They're reporting these numbers every Wednesday, unfortunately. We will be reporting them about six days in arrears from when they've released these numbers. So 49 as of last week. So please keep in mind, though, that these numbers reported by the state are lower than the actual numbers of cases as they do not include clinical diagnoses of COVID-19 by medical professionals or people who self-diagnose and stay at home. The state has launched a community tracing collaborative with Partners in Health. This program focuses on using volunteers to reach out via phone and text to confirmed positive COVID-19 patients and anyone they've been in contact with to trace and contain the onward spread of the virus by arranging testing as well as medical and quarantine support. This has been very welcomed by our local health department. The Hingham Board of Health has issued an order over the weekend that went into effect on Sunday morning, requiring all essential workers to wear protective face coverings while interacting with the public or when they're within six feet of a coworker. That order applies to employees in all grocery stores, restaurants, pharmacies, and all essential businesses included in Governor Baker's COVID-19 Essential Services Order. The order also requires businesses to enforce social distancing of six feet between members of the public in their establishments and to post signage on the door advising on social distancing. If residents see a food establishment, grocery store, or other essential business is not complying with this order, please report it directly to the Hingham Health Department by emailing Residents serve as the eyes and ears of the town. Reporting incidents directly to the Health Department rather than through social media is much more effective and will allow staff to address the situation more efficiently. In line with CDC's recommendation, we continue to encourage all residents to wear cloth face coverings in situations where social distancing is difficult to maintain. That's what I have. I do have a Town Administrator report, but related to COVID, this is what I have. So, Michelle, I think.
Thank you, Tom. Michelle?
Thank you. Three updates from the departments tonight. The first is from our School Department. So Hingham Public Schools will remain closed for the remainder of this academic year per the Governor's order earlier today. In a letter sent out to the community today, the School Department stated it will begin planning for revisions to its remote learning plan. It expects to receive new revised guidance for the extension of the remote learning plan from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education later this week. The current remote learning plan will stay in effect through Friday, May 1st. The school is also planning to conduct a district-wide survey of students, faculty, and families to solicit feedback about the remote learning plan. And the school has been sending out great community letters conveying a lot of this information. Those communications can be found on the school's COVID-19 Resource and Communication page, which is on the school website, hingamschools.com. Turning to our Public Works Department. I just wanted to note that recycling operations at the transfer station remain open. Residents can continue to drop off recyclable materials while maintaining a safe social distance of at least six feet from others. Everyone should continue to move through the transfer station efficiently and shouldn't congregate in groups or linger for conversations. We want to thank everyone for following these guidelines so far. The Superintendent of DPW also reports that street swooping and tree cleanup operations are ongoing as a result of last week's storm. DPW is also expecting there to be some debris from the 30 to 50 miles per hour wind gusts tonight. The staff will be on hand to respond to those calls as necessary. DPW is also working on the 2020 street reconstruction/paving schedule for this year with the Town Engineer. And one final update from them, the National Grid Gas Main Replacement Project on Route 28, 228, is ongoing. The gas company is moving fairly quickly, and they're already past Collins Road, heading in the direction of 3A as of today.
That's great.
And so finally, from our Recreation Department. Our Rec Department is working hard to operate as many live remote classes as possible. Right now, they're running 12 dance classes and about five fitness classes all via Zoom. Residents interested in participating in the fitness classes can find information on the Rec Department's website. So I wish there is a way to offer remote spinning, but they're not there yet. And Rec staff continue to work with the town's consultant on the athletic field and outdoor court study, and they expect to have a draft report completed soon. That was a CPC project approved last year. And finally, Rec is continuing to schedule and plan fall and winter recreation programs. So we have that to look forward to. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, any questions for Tom or Michelle?
I do, but again, I wanted to thank Tom, Michelle, and all of the departments for stepping up and functioning and functioning well during these times. I know it's not easy, and I do know that the town residents appreciate all their efforts. Two, one comment and one question. The comment, the first statement was that all public and private schools will be closed. My understanding, that's physical closure, that the online learning is continuing. So the schools are, my understanding, technically open. It's just the physical structures that are closed for access. Is that correct?
That's accurate, yes.
Okay. And then, second, you described that the Board of Health is requiring businesses to post a notice concerning compliance with the COVID-19 health standards. Is there a sample notice available that can be put on the town website that businesses can use as a model?
We can run that by, I'm sure Susan Sarnie has communicated that, but we'll make sure of that and get it up on the website if appropriate tomorrow.
Great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Yep, thank you.
Mary, any questions, comments?
Joe, I'm going to play your comments about school being still in session to my high school junior in making those. You know, I just wanted to add something, you know, the news about the schools, while not surprising, it is really particularly bittersweet for the members of the high school class, especially the seniors. With this comes the cancellation of spring athletics that many kids have been working towards. I read a tweet earlier from Hingham High School Girls Lacrosse that I just want to read because I really thought that it captured a lot of the essence of the Hingham High School class of 2020 and all of the athletic teams. It said to the seniors, "While most get four years to leave their mark, you only needed three to leave your legacy. Your grit, tenacity, enthusiasm, humor, kindness, and competitive fire will live on in our program." And, you know, by extension, I think that that's an appropriate characterization of the class of 2020. I know there's a lot of discussion still to be had about a lot of the end-of-the-year events. I think Principal Rick Swanson is very tied into the desire of the students in some way to do that and the need to do it at the appropriate time and the appropriate place. But I did just want to note that, you know, for those who are seniors in high school or seniors in college, this is not easy, and we appreciate what you are doing for everyone in our community.
Well said, Mary. And I, you know, I'm just so glad you made those comments. I was gonna make some comments at the end during my report because I share both your and Joe's heartbreak for our students and particularly for our seniors. But, you know, I was reflecting today, you know, about the typical rhythm of a spring academic calendar and the milestones that, you know, students at every grade level undergo and celebrate with family and in this community. And, you know, I just think it's certainly a necessary step and the right step, but it's a heartbreaking step all the same. And it doesn't go unnoticed, you know, we, on the Board of Selectmen, together with all the town departments, right, we have a lot to manage, as does the School Committee and the Superintendent and his executive staff. But emotionally, we're right there with you on all this. This is not the way, you know, this is not the way we wanted to have our spring unfold. We're proud of all of you. We believe in all of you. And, you know, we appreciate the sacrifices that we're all making to keep the community safe. So, thank you, and thanks, Mary and Joe, for those comments as well. Any comments or questions from the audience with respect to the COVID update provided by Tom and Michelle? Okay, seeing none, I would open it up. Well, actually, why don't we, should we do the appointments first, and then I'll come back to public comment?
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
Okay. So we do have appointments tonight of special police officers and court prosecutors. I saw, I think, both David Jones and Glenn Olson maybe on the line. I wondered if one of you would like to speak to these appointments that the Board of Selectmen needs to make this evening?
Yeah, hi, this is Chief Olson speaking. Thank you for taking this matter up tonight. I really appreciate that. Just to explain to you, this is a list that we submit yearly for appointment. Special police officers are appointed on a yearly basis. Their original training is a specialized-in-service training period that they go through, and then they're required to take yearly recertification programs of 40 hours in-class service. All these officers, special officers, work for various different agencies. Some of them are retired officers, some of them work for the Arbor Masters, and others have worked in our special program for quite a few years. They're a great group of residents that struggled this year. We're trying to get some of this training done. We still have a few more that we're going, that are still in the process because of the training was canceled due to the COVID-19. So we're still trying to get those through. So we'll probably be approaching you in two or three more weeks when we've been able to get those through. We're making arrangements for online training for them, so I think that's good. The, one of the new things we started several years back was the Hingham District Court because it serves eight different communities. And it's in the town of Hingham, so we have primary jurisdiction. It's often come to a point that an arrest was, had to be made in the courthouse, and there wasn't a Hingham officer present to do that. So after discussing it with the clerks and the sitting judge, it was decided that if we made all the court prosecutors from the various town specials in the town of Hingham, in the event that arrest needs to take place, it would give them the authority to make that arrest. So that's the reason why we have the other towns involved in being sworn in as specials. It's often done between law enforcement agencies, a type of mutual aid.
Thank you. And then the final category of appointment are just Liquor Control Act-related officers?
Yes.
Okay, questions or comments, Joe, with respect to the appointment of these various officers?
Yes. So Chief, my understanding is that the function that the special police officers serve is really, primarily, other than the court-related ones, for special events and to supplement your forces needed during busy times, like at the polls or during parades, elections, fireworks, concerts, and traffic duties. Is that the correct understanding of what these special officers would be doing?
Yes, they're always, first of all, you know, if there's any event that we would need them for, we would call them up, such as like the main events that happen in town. I'm sure how many people have seen them out there working. We couldn't do some of these large-scale events without these. We also couldn't provide some of the road safety out there that we do without the use of the specials. And we've also had, it's been very fortunate that they also serve, such as Leslie Badger. She's the Animal Control Officer. She does have police authority in that position. You know, there's a list of Arbor Masters that are also specials that, again, have law enforcement powers, and that's part of their requirement for this job.
And you mentioned the training. I've read in years past that the training costs and the expense are actually borne by the special police officers themselves. Is that still true?
Yes, it is. Yeah, they actually pay for the training themselves, and they supply their own equipment. They have to do everything the regular officer does. And so it's really no cost to the town. They do have opportunities where they can work for us and get paid. So they do, they are able to recoup their money, so it's not a total loss. But I know in their initial training, they'll probably spend $2,000 to $3,000 just on equipment alone.
Yeah, I mean, I think it shows a tremendous commitment to the town, and I'm really grateful that you've arranged it again this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Mary, any questions?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, questions or comments from the public with respect to the appointment of special officers? Seeing none, I've got, we've got, it looks like three or four motions for these appointments. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint the following personnel as special police officers for the Town of Hingham for a term ending April 30th, 2021. Raymond Brew, Leslie Badger, Richard Corcoran, Kenneth Corson, Joseph Driscoll, Daniel Goldstein, David Hoard, Robert Mansfield, Michael McHugh, Michael Murray, Kevin Nguyen, John Narcidis, John Norris, Michael Parker, Mitchell Powers, Michael Riley, James Taylor, Russell Way Jr., James Wells, and Brian Willard.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the appointment of the special police officers as listed, say aye. Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Power?
Aye.
Karen Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for the longer list here. I move to appoint Charles Southir as a special police officer for the Town of Hingham for a term ending December 31, 2020.
Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor shall say aye. Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Power?
Aye.
Karen Johnson?
Aye.
You got the next one, Joe.
Oh, I was putting that one back to you, okay. I move to appoint the following officers as court prosecutors and backups for Hingham District Court for a term ending April 30, 2021. From the Hull Police Department, Officer Michael Flaherty, Detective Daniel Dunn. From Hanover Police Department, Sergeant Daniel Salvucci, Sergeant Timothy Kane. From Rockland Police Department, Officer Sean Brund, I'm gonna try, Brundage. Officer Jeffrey Durenzo, Officer Joseph Zalinski. Situant Police Department, Sergeant Kenneth Bates, Sergeant James Bullman, Sergeant James Ilmartin, Detective Owen Kirkbride. From the Norwell Police Department, Sergeant Williams, William Pastures.
Second? There is a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor shall say aye. Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Power?
Aye.
Karen Johnson?
Aye.
Joe, I think you earned your pay tonight, Joe.
Oh, I'll even go for the next one.
All right, I like it.
I'll go for it.
Okay, I move to appoint the following detectives as agents of the Board of Selectmen to enforce the laws of the Liquor Control Act and the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, regulations for all licensed liquor establishments in the Town of Hingham for a term ending April 30, 2021. Detective Sergeant Phil Emmett, Detective Phil Tracy, Detective Dan Leary, Detective Heather Grumida, Detective Michael Gervasi.
Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor shall say aye. Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Power?
Aye.
Karen Johnson?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so you have all been doing the heavy lifting on the reading, so maybe I'll take the next one. And I would move that we proclaim Wednesday, April 22nd, 2020, as Earth Day in the Town of Hingham, and I'm prepared to read the Earth Day proclamation. So I'll read that, and then we could vote on it, maybe. The Town of Hingham, Massachusetts' Earth Day proclamation. Whereas, "The Town of Hingham is part of the global community, is participating in Earth Day 2020, and recognizes the environmental challenges faced by all peoples. And whereas, 'It is understood that as citizens of the global community, the Town of Hingham must step forward and take action to create positive environmental change that will support the management and care of our environment. And whereas, environmental education, along with awareness, helps the citizens of Hingham develop the concern and skills to address the environmental challenges we face. And whereas, 'In recognition of today's environmental challenges, trees will be planted as a symbol to our commitment to the good stewardship of all that is entrusted to our care. And whereas, the Town of Hingham pledges to support environmental and educational initiatives in our community that encourage others to undertake similar actions. Now therefore, we, Karen A. Johnson, Mary M. Power, Joseph M. Fisher, selectmen of the Town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 22nd, 2020, as Earth Day, dated this 21st day of April, 2020.'" Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor shall say aye. Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Power?
Aye.
Karen Johnson?
Aye.
I will say, usually there are ceremonies that accompany these. After we make these proclamations, then Mary, Joe, and I will, would go to one or more of the ceremonies. So a couple of years ago, I know you went, Mary, I went. You know, we actually plant a tree, and people gather, and I read, you know, one of us reads the proclamation again. So it's another one of those kind of springtime events that gather us as a community that we will forego this year. We will plant a tree, but we will not gather as a community to recognize that. However, I think it's just important for us to, tonight, continue the recognition of the stewardship of our community and our earth with the proclamation.
If I could just add to your comments, and I appreciate your comments, just to note that the first Earth Day was in 1970.
So, you're right, yeah.
Twenty million Americans participated at that time, took to the streets. And it's really a movement that is ongoing and that our resolution today is not for just one day. It's to continue this day by day. And with that, I thank you for your comments.
Oh, thank you, Joe. Okay, would someone like to do the Arbor Day proclamation? Seeing none, I will. Go ahead, do you want to do it?
I will relieve you of that. This is the Town of Hingham, Massachusetts Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas, "In 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas, this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And trees in Hingham increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas, Hingham, Massachusetts has been recognized as a Tree City, USA, by the National Arbor Day Foundation, desires to continue its tree-planting ways. Now therefore, we, Karen A. Johnson, Mary M. Power, and Joseph M. Fisher, selectmen of the Town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 24, 2020, as Arbor Day in the Town of Hingham, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, support our town's forestry program, and to plant trees to glen the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations, dated this 21st day of April, 2020."
So I would accept a motion to proclaim Friday, April 24th, 2020, Arbor Day in the Town of Hingham.
So moved.
Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor shall say aye. Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Power?
Aye.
Karen Johnson?
Aye.
Great. Okay, so we are back to the agenda, and I would accept public comments for items not on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody on the line that would like to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none. Tom, you said in addition to your COVID report, you had a Town Administrator report you'd like to share?
Sure. A couple of things. One is, I just wanted to let you all know that we received, the rating agencies on occasion will issue comments on those that they have rated. And I wanted to read to you the credit overview that we received from Moody's, as it's, I think, pretty impressive, and a credit to the financial policies that the town has in place. So the credit overview reads as follows. "Hingham's credit position is superior, and its AAA rating far exceeds the median rating of AA3 for cities nationwide." That's what they call a AAA rating. "Key credit factors include a very healthy financial position, a very strong wealth and income profile, and a considerable tax base. It also reflects an affordable debt burden and a moderate pension liability." So I think that's a great big thank you to the three of you and boards past that have maintained fiscal responsibility. And as a result, we're in a very strong position. So thank you for that. And the last thing I wanted to mention, I just gotta find my notes and get it in front of me here. Hold on. Michelle, do you have anything you want to read while I'm looking?
No, I think that's the last item, Tom. I'll get this.
Are you sure?
Michelle, you gotta find some.
Sorry, I don't have any reports tonight.
Got a joke or anything, or?
Hold on a second.
I can come back to you.
That would be great, thank you.
Okay. So Michelle, nothing further?
Nothing, thank you.
Joe?
Yes, a couple of comments and questions. As we look towards the summer, I would expect that a number of our younger residents are likely to be in town. Perhaps summer camps may be either closed or postponed, other programs are being put on hold. And I am hoping that the Board of Selectmen, as well as other groups in town, are making plans so that residents who are in town, particularly, again, our younger residents, have something to focus on and that we can hopefully direct their energies in a positive manner. Second point I wanted to raise was that I understand that there have been discussions about potentially reopening the farmer's market in a manner that conforms with state and local health standards. I understand those discussions are ongoing and I am looking forward to seeing, not only seeing, but making sure that whatever comes out is consistent with what our local health standards require. And third, really, just to note that I've been receiving communications and I suspect, I suspect that others have as well, about residents who are planning projects to support charities, to support first responders, and others who are on the front lines during this COVID-19 pandemic. I expect we're going to be receiving news over the next couple of weeks about events that are being planned that are all in, designed to promote the public good. So thanks in advance for those who are working hard and diligently to provide that support. Thank you.
So, Tom, you ready? You want me to keep going?
Sure, I'm ready whenever you want me to.
Okay.
So we just wanted to recognize the hard work and dedication from our 911 dispatch team at Shrek, which is the South Shore Regional Emergency Communications Center, as this is Dispatcher Appreciation Week. Actually, it was last week. Our 911 dispatchers answer some of the toughest calls that our residents ever have to make and our Shrek team is there to talk them through the situation and make sure that help, that they know that help is on the way. On top of their normal duties, Shrek staff have, play an integral part in Hingham's COVID-19 response and are serving as part of our incident management team. Our own Chief Olson helped organize a wonderful event. It was a drive-by thank you to Shrek members that are, that are based in Hingham Town Hall by the Hull, Hingham, Norwell, and Cohasset Police and Fire Departments last week. It was a wonderful, very moving event. I believe it was well-received by the Shrek, by the Shrek team and they know how much we think about them, how much we think of them. And specifically, we wanted to call out the leadership and their entire team. We wanted to thank and commend Laurie Crook, the director, Aaron Smith, the assistant director, and the entire Shrek team for their service to the citizens of Hingham, but also to the larger communities of Hull, Norwell, and Cohasset as a region. So they do amazing work, they are the true frontline. They get the calls as soon as they're, when they're made. These folks care deeply about what they do. I work with them very closely as a, as a member of the Board of Directors for the Shrek program and I know, I've got to know these folks over the years. I know how dedicated they are and they're just, we're just very lucky that they're a terrific team and this is a difficult time, so just wanted to call, shout them out.
Yeah, I really appreciate that, thanks, Tom. Anything further, Tom?
I'm good, thank you.
And, and the, I think, I think the Hingham Anchor covered the parade, which I just thought was outstanding, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Mary, anything to report tonight?
Um, you know, two things. The first one is that in, you know, watching some of the news conferences from, you know, at a state and at a federal level, I think that the number of reported cases in Massachusetts is suggesting that, that perhaps we have, you know, plateaued and that, you know, we are, our efforts to flatten the curve are successful. I would just continue to urge us all to follow all of the guidelines, whether they're set at a federal, state, or local level. I know, at least in this household, you know, people have cabin fever, this is frustrating. As the weather gets nicer, you know, some days that makes it harder. And I think that the more we continue to kind of stay the course and follow the guidance that is set, the quicker we can start to resume activities, perhaps in a different way. But I just think that's so important. And, you know, the, the other thing I would just say is, you know, I think in our household, like many, you know, we have our up days, we have our down days. And I am, I continue to be so extraordinarily inspired by people who are doing things to help people through this very difficult time. And I just wanted to mention, there is a group of citizens in Hingham, they call themselves FLAG. It's, it stands for Frontline Appreciation Group. This is a group that collects donations that are used to support local food establishments, to purchase food, that they then transport primarily to all of our first responders at South Shore Hospital. And, you know, it's just a wonderful thing. People who, who donate are helping. It is supporting some of our local businesses, it is helping our frontline people. And I also just wanted to acknowledge that there are two Hingham citizens, Katie Daly and Katie Puzo, who work at South Shore Hospital, who are playing a key role in connecting all of these very generous donations with all the very hard-working healthcare people. And, you know, I would just say, as a, as a member of the board and a citizen in the community, when I hear those stories, my down days are a little less gloomy and I just continue to be inspired by all of these extraordinary acts from people. I know that there are many, many more out there and, you know, we're just so grateful for everybody's individual and collective efforts to helping us all, helping us all get through this difficult time, so thank you.
Thank you, Mary, thank you very much, well said. I have a couple of things to report as well. You know, one is that the town financial planning effort continues. We are trying to assemble data, you know, on a daily basis to continue to update our projections, both in terms of the close of the FY20 fiscal year and planning for the FY21 fiscal year. So we haven't, we haven't lost sight of that, that task. And we are, we are planning to be able to move forward, to be able to update town meeting with that thinking, you know, at the end of June. So that's ongoing by the three of us and our staff, with the help of our finance team and capital market advisors, as well as our state delegation, updating us on, you know, state and federal aid possibilities as we move forward through this crisis. So that's one. Two, Linda Harper, the director of the library, in the Hingham Public Library, sent out an email to patrons for whom they have email addresses, updating folks on online programming, ebooks, movies. You know, these are all services that are free and it may be, you know, something to take a look at, both for the students in the audience as well as, you know, parents and others. I think there's just an array, the full array of programming and services that may be helpful to take advantage of online at this point. And I'm hoping my sons have tuned in because Mother's Day is coming up on Sunday the 10th. So I wanted to let folks know that the downtown merchants, a number of them are participating in a window shopping event. So you could stroll by the shop. The shops that are participating in the Mother's Day window shopping have a flower, a paper flower in the window or on the display. And then those would be the shops that would be available to have phone orders or online orders and curbside pickup. So again, you know, I think we, we, as a board, are mindful of, you know, trying to promote the vitality of the square and I think the merchants are trying to be as creative as possible in sort of staying relevant and being able to make retail available within the socially, social distance guidelines. And last but by no means least, and my colleagues may have seen this, but there was a guy who ran a barber shop in Hingham Center called, whose name is Peter Rando and he celebrated his 102nd birthday.
Wow.
And I, I think the chief is on, I think Police and Fire were part of a 50-plus car parade for his birthday. Lives over on Levitt Street and thankfully, it was a nice day. He was able to sit outside and enjoy the parade. I'm told that the Quint joined in. But I did have to read this, this little paragraph that appeared in the Hingham Anchor because it's from our colleague, former selectman and planning board member, and now ZVA member Paul Healy, who as we all know from many stories, worked at Charlie Cushing's Gap. Which is right there in the center by the barber shop. And he says, "There are a lot of happy memories of that time. There's a reason that people said Hingham Center is the best place on earth. Pete Rando was a real part of that and it's great to have a portion of that time still remembered. Happy birthday, Pete." You know, I bring it up because kind of long-time, long-view, committed community members and these great, great memories that, to Mary's point, you know, help us find inspiration, you know, when things are tough and uncertain. So happy birthday to Peter Rando from, from the Board of Selectmen. And that's it for me this evening. Anybody else have anything?
Karen, since you mentioned Mother's Day coming up, today is actually several holidays that we should note. It is Administrative Professionals Day. So Administrative Professionals, thank you. You mentioned the email that went out from the library. Today is actual, the National Library Workers' Day. Thanks to them. A funny one and then a solemn one. Today is the National Chocolate-Covered Cashews Day.
Come on, Joe, you're making that one up.
I am not. And in, on a solemn note, for Jews and particularly all throughout Israel, today is the Holocaust Memorial Day.
Wow.
So we all have our, our various holidays that we observe. That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks for that. Okay, with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Power?
Aye.
Karen Johnson? Aye.